All right, I'd like to bring the town of Wappinger zoning motive appeals meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please, B?
Mr. Delaporte?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Here.
Mr. Galati?
Here. Right, first order of business tonight would be the acceptance of the minutes from September 13th, 2022. Has everybody had a chance to review?
Yes.
Everybody good? Any review, any revisions?
No.
Good. All right, can I have a motion, please, to accept the minutes as written?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
That's so moved. All right, next order of business, is there anybody here representing Karan Garwal?
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
Okay. I was gonna ask you, if you wouldn't mind, if we would move your application to the end of the meeting. The other ones are probably quite shorter than yours. Yours is gonna be, can have some considerable discussion, I believe.
All right.
If that would be okay with you?
That's okay.
Wonderful. All right, so then we will move on to appeal number 227781 area variance. Forrest Ibrahim and Jill Brodsky Ibrahim seeking an area variance section 24037 of district regulations in an R40 zoning district where 25 feet to the side yard, right yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 20 foot 11 inches for the installation of an 18 foot by 36 foot in-ground pool, thus requesting a variance of 12 feet 1 inch. The property is located at 20 Peter Drive and is identified as tax grid number 615704963227 in the town of Wappinger. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. So, you're a familiar-looking gentleman.
Stand right here.
You think right there is probably good.
That's good.
You guys aren't getting the right order?
You got your messed up, don't you?
So, for the board and anybody might be listening in, again, just a brief description of what you need and why you need it.
We are looking to permit an in-ground pool, as you had mentioned, based on the flag lot on store and the angle of our property line, based on the geothermal system that we have installed, and our inability to move our septic system to accommodate the pool, we're seeing the variance that we can install the pool. The only acceptable part, we are after many, many different exploratory options.
Gotcha. Now, we were at a site visit a couple weeks ago, actually our second site visit, I guess, right? And see what you got going on. I know this has been kicked around for quite some time now. And we understand you moved some things around to make it work, you know, and we appreciate you making some changes. I know we could see where you have your geothermal staked out and some topo, some real topo you have to deal with in the yard. I don't know if you guys have any other questions. I know we kinda, you know, been there a couple times and see what's going on. I don't have any additional questions.
I don't have any further questions.
No? All right. So, anybody in the audience have any questions or concerns regarding this application? Okay, then, can I have a motion, please, to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to have we close the public hearing.
Can I have a second?
Second.
On favor? All right. All right, then, can I have a motion, please, to grant or deny the applicant the variance?
I'll make a motion to grant the variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the neighborhood, I believe. There is no substantial detriment to the nearby properties. There is, to me, no other feasible means available after the strenuous work that we put you through, available to pursue, to achieve the benefit that you seek other than the requested variance. The requested variance is substantial, and, but it will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district, and the alleged difficulty is self-creating.
I'll second that.
So, we have a second, we have a motion, and a second. Can I have a roll call, P?
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Galati?
Yes. Okay, so your variance has been granted.
Thank you very much.
So, you're all set?
All right.
So, this will get approved in the office tomorrow. It'll go to the building department, and as soon as your building permit's ready, they'll give you a call.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Sure. Have a good night. You too. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, next order of business tonight would be discussion, appeal number 227763, Stephen J. Mazil, I think, seeking an area variance section 24037 of the district regulations in an R20 zoning district where no structure, where no accessory structures permitted in the front yard. The applicant is seeking a variance to allow for an 18 foot by 33 foot above-ground oval pool with a deck to be placed in the front yard. Where 35 feet to the front yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 3.9 feet for the installation of an 18 foot by 33 foot above-ground oval pool with deck, thus requesting a variance of 31.1 feet. The property is located at 16 Wendy Road and is identified as tax grid number 625801065735 in the town of Wappinger. Please, for the record, your name and address.
Sure, Edward Freer. I'm the attorney for the homeowner.
Gotcha.
Eleven, actually, I'll, the office address is 1345 Motor Parkway, Ireland, New York, 11749.
Gotcha. So, in looking at, in looking at the documents, I mean, we generally ask the applicant to kinda give us a brief description of what you need and why you need it, and how we got here, actually, in your case, if you would be so kind as to do that.
Sure, so this was relayed to me from my client who's under contract to sell the house. The pool is existing.
Uh huh.
Okay, so, from what he told, you know, it's his parents' house, it's his parents' house that we're gonna cross, he's the first, he's now selling the house. You know, he and I spoke, and apparently there's been a pool at this location since 1971, apparently. That was the original pool, in 1989, a new pool was installed basically in the same spot.
Uh huh.
And now we're under contract, and of course, you know, when we did the building search, it came up with a violation.
Gotcha.
So, we're trying to determine, you know, can we, can we get a variance? Do we have the权, the pool, you know? Obviously, he'd like to keep it, the owner would like to keep it. So, you know, he called up the office and said that he would have to get a survey, which he did, and I think, I don't know if you guys have a draft copy of it, I think he put a draft copy of it with the applicant.
Yeah.
Okay. And he said there's actually an older survey in, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's in the building department files or the planning department's files, from when, I guess there's a lot that was on the end of that street that was actually, someone bought it and built a house on it. So, it would be, I mean, if you're looking at the map, you see where it says asphalt drive in the top right-hand corner?
Yes.
That goes now to a house that is in the back that wasn't, you know, that, that was built after the pool.
So, like a flag lot or something, maybe?
So, there was a three-lot subdivision on Widmer Road, so, existing home, second home, and then this home was built all the way back, so they brought it in from Wendy Road.
Oh, yeah. Oh, we gotcha. So, in looking at the plan, there's obviously a fence that's not on the property and looks like the, I don't know if that's a deck or a paver patio.
That's a paver, yeah, I think that's a paver patio that goes over the line.
That's also over the line. Is the corner, it kinda looks like the corner of the, it looks like a gravel surround, that's right?
No, so that's like, I think, well, that's, yeah, there's a gravel and then it looks like there's pavers, so, yeah, so it's kinda like a gravel, paver area.
All right. So, at a bare minimum, of course, you know, that would have to be resolved, but the variance is, you know, that the, your client is requesting is, you know, extreme, to say the least, right?
Mm-hmm.
You know, we do, we do ordinarily do site visits to all the applications, and we will, we will do one here as well. But again, you're just looking, just basically looking at the application and what you guys are looking to do, you know, tough.
Mm-hmm.
I, you know, guys, I don't know if you have any more questions before we go out there, but...
I think, just wondering if you, why, that this pool was there in 1977?
What I'm told, the pool, the first pool was put in in 1971.
Seventy-one. And then was replaced in 1989.
That's what I'm told.
And the thing is done after 89?
Correct.
No deck or anything?
No, I'm, I built, so this is like an above-ground pool, then it has the metal kind of tech that goes around part of it, or around all of it, it looks like, and then there's like a patio, you know, a patio area.
But that all done in 1977?
I can double-check that, but that is my impression, yes, sir.
I will also check to see if there were permits for the pool and the first pool. Keep in mind, though, that when that subdivision was done, both your client's parents and the people across the street, that was all grass, somehow they thought it was theirs, and it was a town of, town of Wappinger right-of-way that they were unaware of till that driveway went to go in, which probably why they have their fence out onto the town right-of-way.
Right.
And metal deck.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's like that from the, from the map, yeah.
So, and I told your client, the fence has to go since it's on the town's property.
Yeah, and, yeah, and that's, he's okay with that, obviously.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, because I'm not a pool person, per se, has he had anyone look at the pool to see if it's safe at this point, because it's 30-something years old?
I mean, I've seen pictures of it, it seems okay, but I, you know...
I mean, I don't know, you know, picture.
Yeah.
I mean, the lifespan of the above-ground pools are usually not, not that long?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
I said the lifespan of those types of above-ground pools are usually not 30-plus years?
Well, I mean, we'll get a look at it, but it's not gonna be our determination to make, right, whether it's safe or it's not safe. There are determinations to whether it's, can stay or it's gotta go.
What were, what were the pool regulations that would've been in place if it was built in the 80s?
It's possible it was 10 feet to the property line.
Yeah.
The problem is, though, whoever put the first pool in may have said they had 10 or 20 feet, building inspector goes out, there's all grass there at the time, and may not have realized that it was on a property line because they didn't require surveys. So, this could have been just an ongoing repeat of an issue.
All right.
Our purview is not, I'm sorry.
No, no, sir.
I was gonna say, our purview is not the deck. It's, because the deck...
Well, the deck goes with the pool.
Yeah.
The deck is part of the pool.
Attached to it, I think.
It's, I don't think it's a regular deck. I think it's like these pools.
It's a metal deck.
Yeah, they come, you can buy them for the pool, so it's part of the pool.
It's part of the pool.
Yeah, it's not a wood deck. They're usually metal and...
So, are we looking at where the line goes to from the property line to the pool?
So, the deck, so the deck is 3.9 in that corner, and I haven't been given a new survey. I had asked for the water line from the pool to the property line.
Excuse me?
But it's, but looking at the size of it, it's probably still less than 10 feet.
Yeah.
Can I just interrupt? I'm the buyer.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, name me.
My name is Robert Malone, I'm with Green.
And you're with who?
I have pictures, if you're interested.
No, we're gonna go see it.
Oh, okay.
But thank you.
Sorry, I have my...
No worries. The shed, I'm assuming the shed probably houses the pool equipment?
I believe so.
The shed was also illegal, and he has to open a permit for that, but it's in the middle of the yard, so that's not an issue, it just needs to be legalized.
Just needs to be legalized, got it. All right.
Just follow up just a moment. In 1989, when it was done, is it required to have full permit if it just...
Yes. Building permits, building permits are not Wappinger, it's New York State, and the building code goes back before we became, you know, before we had zoning in '63, so yes.
So, even in '89, it would've needed a variance?
Would it?
If it had a survey and we saw that it was put there, and it might've been a smaller pool, don't forget this one has a deck, it might be in 10 feet without the deck.
Okay.
That's why I wanna see the water's edge. It may be only 10 feet, the pool itself, but the deck is 3.9.
Regardless of 1977, 1989 is the key date, actually, when was the place, that time would have done, that time there was still grass?
I'm not catching what you're saying. You mean over, past the property line?
When it was replaced.
Right.
Is that was, the boundary line was not clear?
There was no boundary line. It was grass straight across from both neighbors, even though it was the town's property.
So, it was gray, so it probably felt like a side property line to them. They did it in the 70s, thinking it was 10 feet, measuring to the completely wrong thing.
Just by where their fence is, just the fact that their fence is out, I'll make an assumption that they thought that was their property.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, because that line, I mean, you normally don't see a property line that's set back, you know, from the curb, but, I mean, I, I don't...
Well, it sounds like that curb was added after, well after, correct? Like, that curb we're talking about is the driveway, no?
Well, if you look at Wendy Road, it stops, and then you just see a driveway.
Yeah, so the curb you're talking about behind the fence is, is that driveway, which was also built in the public right-of-way, right?
Right. But, yeah, regardless, you know, when you hear things like this, you get it staked out, right? All right, so let's do this. Why don't we plan on doing a site visit on September 22nd?
October 22nd.
I wish you were right, I wish you were right.
Just one last comment?
Go ahead.
I think it's worth having the pool looked at, to see its condition, you know, I'd be surprised if it's that old, if it's in good shape, and it might expedite the sale just to have it removed or pushed back. I think it's worth checking on the client's end.
All right. So, so we're gonna be doing a site visit at the house. We'll come and check it out and see what you got going on. We'll be doing it at about 9 o'clock on the 22nd of October. If the owner's there, great. If he's not, we could kinda see what's going on, I think.
Doesn't need to be.
Doesn't need to be. We'll see what's going on.
Okay.
All right. We'll also then want to set a public hearing for that following Tuesday, for the 25th. So, a set of public hearing for October 25th, imagine.
And then we go boundary line markup at this point?
I don't think it would be a property line.
Are they marked? I don't know if he did the, I don't know. I can check how fluid for us.
You know, if he, if he'd had the survey done recently, it may be, it may be viable that the stakes are in the ground.
Yeah, maybe there's just the rebars in the ground.
That's what I'm thinking.
Or if the survey company has a distance from the fence, you know, that way we could kinda verify.
Yeah, exactly.
The fence should be in place.
Well, the corner of the deck, on that corner, is 3.9 feet, so maybe the sun can put a marker there.
Yeah. We could do that too, as well. Okay. All right. So, we'll be out there on the 22nd at 9 o'clock.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, appeal number 227764, LeCary subdivision, seeking an area variance section 24037 of the district regulations in an R20/40 zoning district where 40,000 square feet is required, the applicant can provide 30,696 square feet for the construction of a single-family residence on 1.64 acres, thus requesting a variance of 9,304 square feet. The property is located at 3939 Middle Bush Road and is identified as tax grid number 615701458871 in the town of Wappinger. Hello, Mr. Roberts.
Good evening, board members. My name is Albert Roberts. I'm the attorney for both Mr. and Mrs. LeCary, who own the property, and K. and J. Partners, represented by Kyle Lawrence, who is the technical applicant.
Gotcha.
Mr. and Mrs. LeCary purchased the property in 1980, and then they, shortly thereafter, opened up, what many of you may remember, as DeNino's Restaurant. Prior to that, I don't think anybody in this room is as old as I am, there used to be Schmittkey's Pork Store there. I remember that from my high school days. And when they bought it, they converted the pork store to their restaurant. Subsequent to that, it was changed, after they, you know, retired from the restaurant business, it was leased to various restaurants, including, most recently, the Stefano's Restaurant, which was there, but there was a, that was, Stefano came in twice, it was the original Stefano, they moved, somebody else moved in, and then somebody bought the Stefano's name, and they started renovating, and for whatever reason, they just stopped renovating in the middle, and there was an agreement where that individual was let out of the lease. So, the restaurant building is in a partial state of repair or disrepair. The renovations would need to be completed to restore it to a restaurant use, which, since the restaurant has been not occupied for over two years, would require a use variance. I personally brought in John Lawrence in anticipation of making an application for a use variance. John said to me, you know, if we could get two lots, I would take down the restaurant and put up a single-family residence. Now, the current lot configuration is 1.64 acres. There are three buildings that have been there since God knows. There's the residence that Mr. and Mrs. LeCary live in. To the rear of that is a building that houses two one-bedroom, small-bedroom apartments that they lease, and then what would be to the east of that is the restaurant building. And the proposal, which I believe is a win-win, not only for my clients, but for the town. And while it's almost a 9,000-plus variance request, this is in an R2040 district. It is anticipated that either water and/or sewer is to be run down to the site, and once either water or sewer is connected to this parcel, it will be conforming. This presentation was made to the planning board and to the administrative staff, and I believe the proposal has the support of both the planning board and the administrative staff. But this is gonna go a long way to bringing this non-conforming parcel into conformance with the town regulations. I would note that my memorandum, which is attached to the appeal, was prepared before the latest subdivision plaque was created, and Lot 2, which will retain the two residential buildings, the small apartments to the rear and the house that Mr. and Mrs. LeCary live in, that's gonna be 40,092 square feet, and Lot 1 will be 30,696 square feet. Each of these buildings has a separate well and septic, and recently, the restaurant septic system was upgraded, met approvals, and I believe all the certifications are in file at the town. And what we are hoping is that we would get your approval to permit this 30,690 square foot lot with the understanding that the restaurant building would be torn down and a brand-new single-family residence erected in its place. And I might add, there is a human side to this, but most people, their real estate is their nest egg. And Mr. LeCary is not here. He is severely disabled with a neurological disease. His daughter also lives with him, and she has an issue, and I'm not saying that, depending on whether we use criteria or not, but there's a human side to all of the variances, whether it's a swimming pool, a shed, in this case, it's people's nest egg for retirement. And I just want you to understand the overall impact, but most importantly, we want you to understand that this is ultimately a win for the town also, because ultimately, this slightly lower square foot lot will be brought into conformance with the town code. And I'd be glad to answer any questions. I have a ton of information to give you that I don't wanna bore you with, but I'm here to answer questions.
So, just so you understand, I, I think you explained it, Albert. So, Lot 2, the two structures will remain?
They're, they're gonna remain, but they're both residential and a residential...
So, in Lot 1, when then ultimately the, the restaurant, of course, would go away, and the single-family home would be erected in its place?
Correct.
Gotcha.
And each, each one of those buildings has their own septic system, septic system, and separate well.
Separate well. So, they're both well, they're all well and septic there now?
And if you look at the area map on one of the, you'll notice that the few residential structures nearby, they're all long and narrow. They might be physically larger, but the, the layout of the residence is very similar to what is being proposed.
Yeah, your joiners are similar, probably joining lots or something.
Do you have a new septic design for when the house is being built? They would have to basically design a new septic system, correct?
No, we don't have to.
Okay, they can reuse the old restaurant?
They're at the planning board right now.
Yeah.
They have stopped while they have to come to you for variance. So, they've, they're submitting health department and all other information to the planning board.
Because I was under the impression that the health department still had to approve the septic system, so they would have to approve it for the house, correct?
It might be conceptually approved at this time, but then as they go through with the house, and, and then even go further, should the subdivision go through, they get the variance, when they come into the building department, a sans-34 form goes to the health department again, and we get a sign-off from the health department before they would get a building permit to even start a foundation. So, the health department's notified multiple times.
And as I, and I wanna point out, that was recently renovated, and there are records on town that are in connection with the restaurant use. This would be a single-family, this thousand gallon tank is on the...
Just in my mind, I know it from a business property, which is just a problem.
A non-conforming business property. There's one other thing at play. Do you want, or I can explain to them, the R40, the R20-40 designation, why this would be legal if they got water or sewer?
Without municipal services, water and sewer, it's R40 square feet. Okay, it's about less than an acre. The two lots, Lot 2, where the residence and the apartments, that would be a little more than, that would remain a little greater than 40,000 square feet. The new lot, the minimum square foot, if there is either water or sewer, is 30,000 square feet. If there's both municipal water and sewer, it reduces to 20,000 square feet. And they, I, you know, some of the new members don't know, I've been involved in water and sewer in this town since 1990. It's in the plans that they are going to serve all of these areas. These are in the so-called big district for the sewer, the, the original plans. The water is expected to expand once the issues down in Chelsea get resolved. So, they are, you know, it's on the books in the studies to expand water and sewer to the core area of the town. So, if they get both, the lot size only has to be 20,000 square. If they get one or the other, it only needs to be 30,000 square feet.
So, conceivably, if the, the town does ultimately serve the property with either sewer or water, then the variance would be...
I think the streets across Camelli and Pleasant don't...
That's, that's a considerable distance.
But it's not that, but it's in that area already, it's close.
But it's prohibitive to run a single line.
For one house.
For one house.
Yeah, sure. Sure understood.
Any idea about the town plan, when it might be doing it, towards more water or wood?
What are the town's plans?
Yeah, when, about?
Okay, what, what the current plans are, I can't answer. The, when the sewer system was first enacted in the early 90s, the town adopted a plan where they had intended to serve the core area of the town, and that's the area served by the main trunk line that goes down Myers Corners Road, all the way, follows Hunter's Creek to the tri-municipal plan. That core area, you have to see the map, it's very complicated, but that entire area was... But that entire area was expected to be served by now. There's been complications with tri-municipal. Currently, as I understand, with the capacity to the sewer outflow into the Hudson. So there's a question of how that issue is to be resolved. But the town has, I believe, a million seven fifty and contracted for sewer service. I don't know if I'm correct on that.
You're close. I don't know the exact number.
But there's been two or three expansions with tri-municipal, but there are plant issues. The water is a question of when they're going to reverse the pipe and allow the Chelsea water to come up into the main town system. So both of these things are nearing conclusion and resolution. And this is why, in my opinion, makes this proposal so desirable for all involved.
Yeah, understood. You understood.
Do you have a question, Tom?
Yeah, it just seems like to me, Al, that I see it is believed that water and sewer lines are within 1,000 feet. And this will bring it into conformance once the town implements a water and sewer expansion. And to Shalisha's point, it could be 10 years.
It could be. But ultimately, it'll be conforming. Okay, rather than put everybody through the expense of trying to re-establish a previously existing non-conforming use and you have, you know, three buildings that have been there since, my guess is the 50s, maybe earlier. You know, it just makes sense to try to make a step forward and bring this parcel into conformance. You still have at least one building that I'm aware of on Middle Bush Road that up close to the road, it's there, it's a non-conforming use. This, we're not going to leave it there. We're going to make it conform.
Yeah, understood.
But Camilli Drive, I guessed that when I said it's 1,000 feet, the plan was to run it, I remember that, to run it down towards Town Hall. And I don't know what happened to those plans.
Do you have the building size shown for the new house? That's, is that set? You're not anticipating any other setback issues?
I don't think they have plans for that, but.
It's going to be about 2,100 square feet roughly. Okay. So you're not anticipating coming back here for any side yard setback issues, anything like that?
No, it would be in compliance with the existing.
Okay.
In fact, one of the reasons when I drafted my memorandum in support, the actual plans hadn't been revised. And I had requested that the Lot One, which would be the new lot, be made as large as possible without infringing on the existing two residential buildings. So that's it in a nutshell. And I believe the planning board acted, I wasn't, I was away when they went to the planning board. I believe they seemed to be in support of that one.
They had nothing against it at that point, and they wanted to see first if they could get the variance, because this is really going to let them move forward or not.
That's a compliment to us. Got it. Okay, well, I thank you for the explanation. I think we will do a site visit there as well.
Sure.
We'll do that on the 22nd as well. We'll probably be there between 9:15 and 9:30. I want to set a public hearing date also for the 25th. And you have a nice sign that you could put in the front yard for everybody to see. Not all the way back, all the way in front.
So that's going to be your job, I believe the town supplies the?
Yes. All yours.
Okay.
All right, thank you. No, I think we're good, Al.
Will the line, the property line that's put in be the driveway that's there now? The designation between the two lots?
It's not going to affect the existing driveway.
Okay, so where will the existing line come from?
It's a, I think it's on the.
It's a side plan.
Yeah, they're on the plan.
They have that marked out during the site visit so we can kind of locate where that is? Is that possible? So know roughly where that line is?
We can have it.
Yeah. Either that or painted on the ground.
If it's painted or?
Whatever.
Thank you.
Take your sign.
Good night, Mrs. Lukari. Good to see you too.
Thanks, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty.
Yeah, I lost some weight. Thank you. Bye-bye.
You guys sat, we're going to move on.
Yeah, we're ready. Go ahead.
All right. Thanks. All right, next up on the agenda tonight will be Appeal Number 227765, Samuel V. Dawson, seeking an area variance Section 24037 of the district regulations in an R-15 zoning district where 30 feet to the rear property line is required. The applicant can provide eight feet for the legalization of a freestanding 20-by-20 deck, thus requesting a variance of 32 feet. The property is located at 8 Kretsch Circle and is identified as tax grid number 615601482749 in the town of Wapageur. Anybody here representing Mr. Dawson? At your name? Oh, there you go. All right, can you please, just for the benefit of the board, explain quickly what you need and why you need it?
I had constructed ignorance, because ignorance is not an excuse, okay? I was not fully aware of the code exactly. And since I was constructing a ground-level deck and freestanding, totally detached, I did a little research on Google where I gathered it would be about eight feet or something like that, six feet or whatever, plus some casual conversation. So I started this construction with about eight feet and then continued and almost finished it when I was served by a stock market. The whole structure is done, but finish is not done. So then I was told, I did not apply for a permit due to, because for the same reason, I thought it might not be acquired, and I'm in this situation. So I was informed to come and go through the procedure. I have been here for two years. We immigrated from, I mean, we came from Texas, my wife and I. And just after COVID, this has happened. However, so I did the application. And I'm just requesting first of the difference of this. One thing I have to say is I've already constructed the complete structure. And I've got about, I have 47 footings in concrete. But, you know, and because it's a large deck, 20 by 20, for more uniformly distributed, I had conceived that and made a couple of friends over a long period of time. We did that. And also a lot of, about 46 transverse blockings also. So I just wanted to mention that. That is the situation right now. And I put it to you, consider what is the best course of action.
Gotcha. Gotcha. You could see the joints you supplied. I see it's a substantial amount of structure here. And you said it's nearly complete? It's nearly complete at this point?
Yes, yes. So there's limited instructions I have to do on top. Handrails and.
Oh, yeah. Well, I think we're absolutely going to have to come out and take a look at it. Is there, is there any way, or can you mark, like David said, you have to, is that property line that you're up close tight to?
Yes, on this side, on the corner that is located in, there is an existing fence.
Okay.
One side is a fence, the other is a wire fence. So that's very clear.
And that's on the property line?
Yes.
More or less.
Well, frankly, I don't know if that's historical.
Right.
I suppose it is.
It would be helpful to confirm, just because, you know, if we do give you the eight feet and it turns out that that fence was one foot over.
Oh, so that adds to the.
It would, it would give you future headache.
Because we were not provided with any survey or anything regarding budgetary.
Yeah, to David's point.
We don't have one on file either.
I mean, to David's point, you know, when we consider this, if we're kind of guessing at what that distance really is, if at some point in time you actually have it surveyed and it's not correct, you're back here again. You don't have any, didn't have any survey with the house when you bought the house? No.
Have you looked to see if there's any rebar, like in the corner where the fence meets, where whoever put the fence in might have used that?
There is one, the only one, but exactly.
The pin?
Because I have seen a concrete and a rebar in the ground, but it is in the, the small corner, which you can see, the corner where the deck is. Yeah, right in that corner. It's only in the ground. But it doesn't follow, like they've, they've fixed, you know, posts and put the fence, the rear.
But if you could find that, that rebar and put a piece of ribbon on it, it might help them.
I should go and have a brief view. Then I'll talk to my neighbor at the back also.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I think you saw with one of the other applications, they had a fence that was off by, what, 10 feet?
Oh, God knows what it's off the property.
Old fences aren't exactly always accurate.
Maybe with any luck, maybe your neighbor has a survey. You know, your neighbor might have a survey that shows the fence, you know? And he'll be able to determine whereabouts it is in line with your property line.
Can you ask him or her?
Okay, and you try to sell, that time same problem, it's come up like it's coming up. So good for you.
Yeah, it is.
I'll try and look at that corner, and then I'll talk to the lady in the other corner.
Sure.
To try, because there are two, three properties all around.
Sure.
So that will help. I'll do that and I'll mark it and, you know.
That would be helpful. So we will be there, we are going to do a site visit there as well on that same day, probably about 9:45 on the 22nd. Okay, it would be helpful if you have that marked out. And we will also set a public hearing for the 25th as well. And you'll, you'll have a sign that you'll need to take with you and put in your front yard. All right, Mr. Dawson, so we will see you on the 22nd. Thank you. Last but not least on the agenda tonight, we have, one second, an adjourned public hearing, Appeal Number 227758, area variance, Karan Garhwal, seeking an area variance Section 24037 of district regulations in an R-40 zoning district where 10 feet to the side yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 8.2 feet for the legalization of an existing 10-by-14 square-foot shed, thus requesting a variance of 1.8 feet. Second, where 40 feet to the side yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 15.2 feet for the legalization of a front bedroom addition, thus requesting a variance of 24.8 feet. Number three, where 40 feet to the side yard left property line is required, the applicant can provide 30 feet for the legalization of a front bedroom addition, thus requesting a variance of 10 feet. Where 40 feet to the side yard right property line is required, the applicant can provide 15 feet for the legalization of a rear kitchen addition, thus requesting a variance of 15 feet. Where 40 feet to the side yard left property line is required, the applicant can provide 12 feet for the legalization of a rear kitchen addition, thus requesting a variance of 28 feet. Six, where 40 feet to the side right property line is required, the applicant can provide 27 feet for the legalization of a rear deck addition, thus requesting a variance of 13 feet. Number eight, where 40 feet is required to the side left property line, the applicant can provide zero feet for the garage, thus requesting a variance of 40 feet. The property is located at 12 Schlechter Road and is identified as tax grid number 615602986957 in the town of Wapageur. Can I have a motion to open the adjourned public hearing? Second? Second, okay, all favoring?
Aye.
So move. Okay, Karan, I'm guessing, no?
Hi.
Engineer.
Oh, you're the engineer?
My name is Nathanium Gudin.
Gotcha.
PE, I work with CDR Engineering, I'm representing Mr. Karan.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay, for us and anybody who might be listening in, I guess, somebody might be listening in, just explain what you need, why you need it briefly. I mean, we kind of got the gist of it, you know, and we were out there, a whole lot going on on that property. But again, just, you know, briefly describe what you need. Go ahead.
So as we discussed in our third meeting, the property has tight setbacks, thanks, because of the nature of the orientation of the site. And so we are requesting branches to basically approve the additions of the loan in relation to the setbacks, including the shed and the front addition and the rear addition and deck. With that, in our last meeting, we talked about the tightness of the garage in the front yard. And so what we did, we acted on the request of this board, and we got a survey to sign and seal basically what's going on with that garage. So in the updated survey that we circulated to you all, there is a, it should show that there is actually an overage of the garage by about 12 inches at the furthest-most point and by .6 or 7 inches at the furthest back point of the garage, or the property line.
Share with me. All right, got it. Right, I got you. Got it.
You see that detail?
So what's the plan?
Yeah, so we can provide zero feet, and we definitely understand that, when I say zero feet, we're seeking zero feet. But anyways, we definitely understand we don't want something going over on the property line. That's definitely something that we want to make sure that we're addressing. And so from an engineering perspective, we've been to the site, we're representing the client. We can work with the client to trim back that soffit to make sure that it's not overhanging on the adjacent property line. However, to do that, we'll need building permits to do that as well. So that is where we're at, really, with this, just seeking your guidance on that is an action that we can apply with this so that we can make sure this property can move forward.
So even if you were to do that, then, but the structure then would still basically be right on the property line?
Yes. We go back to another inch, we still would need a variance, for sure, we can.
Right, you need a, be a very large variance, right?
Some portion of this, of the mass adjacent to that property line was original, correct? Or was that whole garage added?
Yes, so that, that was original. However, we had the step and sees what the, what was built, right? And, you know, with the set of the office and so on. So it is original, however, we're now examining it now, and we have seen that it does not comply. That is the situation that we're in. So even though it was original, we do understand that, hey, it's not complying. Ready to.
Yeah, that's what we're doing. A little parched.
Do we have to assume everything or portions?
Well, anything, short of the shed, anything you don't approve would require him to remove that portion of the house.
Right. Right, so each, each particular variance?
Yeah, so those three rectangles.
I'd imagine we, right, I'm sorry, was that John?
The original?
Right, got it.
So this was added, this piece back here was added, this piece up here?
Yeah, we would ultimately need to rule on each individual variance, right? Yeah, we would ultimately need to rule on each individual variance, right?
Is it feasible to remove the garage? Is there any way that could be done without hurting the rest of the building?
I would say that's, that's not feasible, but the garage is tied into the building when we were there, so that's going to be extensive work, right, to shore, to remove a garage, first off, then remove the structure, and then shoring up the rest of the structure. You know, one thing I'll just note.
Like, the structure of the garage is attached to the structure of the house, it's not like a clearly separate structure that was built at a later date?
No, it's not, it's, it's a, it's part of the structure. It's attached to.
There we are. Garage over here. Right, I mean, you know, I mean, technically, just the garage, right? The garage should be, what were, I guess, what were my questions I'm asking, what would the setback be required normally for the garage to the property line, you know?
If it was freestanding or if it was attached? If it's attached, it's part of the house, then it needs what everything else needs. Part, there's two things going on here, it's on a private road, so to be honest, nobody goes up there, so it's kind of surprise, and we've been going up for his lot and another one, just because of the disarray that the property's been. The other issue here is that a lot of this stuff predated zoning, I'm not saying this structure did, I don't know what year it was built right now, but this is R eighty, I believe, yes. So, R eighty has the largest setback, so it's requiring forty to the side. If it was R forty, and our, so R twenty is very typical, kind of what you just heard, in R twenty, you need twenty feet, in R forty, you need twenty-five, so the difference, five feet is not that much of a difference when somebody needs a setback, but R eighty is a huge zone that's usually for areas with big lots, and a lot of the lots up there are large in size. So, that in and of itself causes a problem for the houses that are built close to a road or close to a side. Zero setback, it doesn't matter what zone you're in.
Yeah, right, right.
It is on the property line, in this case, it's actually over, so depending on what happens with this board, he's going to need a building permit to either remove the soffit or the structure, or part of the house, I don't know, however you vote.
Would I, I, quite frankly, I think, you know, removing the soffit doesn't get us there, right? Just removing the soffit, then you still have, you know, you're, basically, the structure is right on the property line, right? So, the soffit really doesn't help us here, this is what I'm saying.
Well, the structure, so I mentioned a few things, let's go down. So, with the, with the garage, the addition, so on, what, with what Mr. Garhwal did, is that he's now remodeling the inside.
Right.
But when he purchased in two thousand and three, these things existed, just to make sure, bring that back up. The actual garage structure itself is actually between point nine feet, right, and one point one feet from the property line, so the garage wall itself, so it is up to the property line, but it's not.
So, the siding, you're siding with that?
Yeah, yeah, so, so siding, the edge of the wall of the garage, from here, over point nine feet is the property line, but the soffit of the garage goes over one foot.
Correct.
And we can peel back the soffit, right?
Right, and that, that's a good start, I'm saying, but, you know, it's still right on the property.
Having soffit or anything in neighbor's property, I don't think we as a board can approve anyway, so we cannot vote on that one, because it's somebody's property.
Well, he's saying he'll take it to zero.
Right, so now, question is, if we go to zero, which looks like, I don't know how practice, yeah, it's possible, so, as a minimum, that's why I see, that as is, we will not be entertaining at all, or we could not entertain, going to zero or point, point two, point two feet, by, because you're putting gutters or whatever.
Well, we can peel back more, right?
But you cannot go beyond the wall.
Not beyond the wall, but we can have a different gutter configuration, not go over the property line.
Or nine feet is space only you have to play with.
Yeah, point, yeah, I'm very.
That's in the back.
In the back, right.
The front is zero, if he takes the soffit off.
Right.
Front is zero, oh.
The, the, the front, the front right now, it's point nine feet, and at the max of wiggle room that we have is one point one.
So, point nine to one point one, yes.
So, point nine feet is a wall to the property line in the front, and one point one feet is a wall to the property line end up, clear part of that garage.
Not even talked about, agreed upon, yes, we have to remove the soffit, now we can talk about it.
Well, I think, I think just, just the fact that, you know, the applicant, he's, he's going to remove the soffit, really, really doesn't get us anywhere, right? I mean, it's.
No, he does get, he does get one point, that we'll not be in a neighbor's property.
Correct.
It doesn't mean the zoning requirement, too, but, I mean, if we did, if they are not going to remove soffit, I don't think even we can talk about, because that's not somebody's property.
Right, but he said, he said they would remove the soffit.
Yes, right, so that's a good start.
We agree on that.
That's a good start, right.
Even at that, you know, he has, you know, he's still basically on the property line, he has no setback.
Yes, no setback.
Zero.
We can, we can move it back further and have point five.
Your basic structure, right, your garage structure is a problem.
Is that the garage from the front to the rear, where it says concrete walk? Is the garage the entire left side?
It appears that way.
No, so when you go into the house, there's actually, there's the garage, and there's a laundry room, so that's actually part of, behind the garage is part of the house, so I can.
That's what I thought.
Okay, so it's like a small laundry room?
Laundry room, rest of the house is like a bathroom behind that laundry room, so it's part of the.
So, you have a laundry room and a bathroom along the sideline?
Yes.
It's not all garage?
Right.
Over the top of the concrete walk, is that what that is? Is that what that means?
No, no.
Or is there a concrete walk out in the open? I don't remember.
The, the, the concrete walk, so, so the concrete walk is, is not open, it's like a foundation of sorts, so it's just like rubble and so on, there is a bathroom, so after that concrete walk, there's a bathroom, I remember, I reckon there's like a laundry room, and a utility closet, and then there's a garage, so it like flows on that side into three different areas of the house.
Now, I bring that up, because if you ask him to take, say, five feet off the side, that's going to be the bathroom and the laundry room, too. That's why I wanted to just get clear that that side is not strictly garage.
Just the garage, right, Falia? So, there's more, more structure than just the garage, that's a problem.
Right. Well, here's, Mr. Nathan is saying that it's not feasible to remove.
The garage.
The garage.
Correct.
It would be heavy construction.
Yeah.
It's not that it can't be done, this is a one-floor, he's a PE, he can, you can do it.
A photo, kind of.
Yeah, that'd be helpful to see.
Yeah, so, this is the side, so this, so this in front is a, the garage is right here, apologize for the resolution here, but right here is, this is a side corner of the garage, and then you go along the garage, here's a bathroom window.
Back about a foot.
Is that a front end, like, what is that changing color, is that, is that all flush? Where the electrical meter is?
It's like a jogs back.
It jogs back a little bit, so, yeah, it's not like more than, I would say, a foot or so, which, let's, let's go to the top, you can see that top, that's the jog back.
Okay.
That's that jog back right there.
So, that's where the garage ends, and is a laundry room after that jog?
No, laundry room is before it, yeah.
Okay, is it, the bathroom is after that jog?
The bathroom is right here.
Okay.
That's the bathroom, laundry room is over here, I don't know exactly.
Tough to see on that, you know, if the garage goes to a certain point, and it jogs a little bit, and continues.
Rest of the house, the roof is uniform.
And was it a difference from that line to the property line?
Right.
One point one.
Which may have been pre-existing. From that jog, is one point one, but a bathroom is.
So, that might have been right up to.
How do they check that electrical meter? I guess it doesn't matter.
That was a concrete.
They go, they send me back there.
There was a driveway to park, park your car.
In the front, here is that tight.
From what I understand, that it had a.
And the soffit comes over.
That they built, but they just put the wall.
Yeah.
This is dashed out of line, because that's usually the property line, though.
I have no answer for this.
Was that represented that?
That, I believe, oh, that's the overhead wires.
Okay.
Property line has a solid one here, which is represented.
Right. It's already empty.
Can you take one? Yeah, sure, thank you. So, we're showing them the survey, but let me go back to. So.
So, we can approve.
So, if you're looking at the.
Point nine variance.
The progress right here, so this is the front corner of the garage, so, back there, yes, the same in the backyard.
Butter, apparently, right.
Yeah, you have a neighbor there, or there, okay, took a photo, okay, boom, I think came to do that, so anyways, so we took a photo, right, so this photo right here, we're standing right over here, looking at this red mark right here is that corner, okay? And so, basically, it comes, it's the garage, a laundry room, hallway, utility area, bathroom. So, what I'm showing you is that it's uniform flow, it's part of the house, and it jogs back right here, well, yeah, yeah, and I'll show you the detail of that, spare minute. This is the detail, so that's the front of the garage, point nine feet, right?
We're looking down.
We're looking, I plan for you, this is the front, over here, that's the front of the house, corner of the garage, and then coming over, you have that jog back, bathroom is right here, so we were standing right here before locating that.
All right, so I, I think what we, what we need to do, guys, as a board, is we'll read down the various variances one at a time and rule on them individually, and I think that's it.
Each one has to be, motion unto their own.
Gotcha. Right, right, and I'm prepared to start that process if I serve. Yeah, I gotta do that first.
Just explain to me one more time, what we're going to do, we're going to read down.
I may read them, each individually one, and we'll have to rule on each one separately.
You're going to do that now?
Yeah, yeah, prepared to, to read down that. So, is there any, any other further questions or comments? I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the, the public hear, adjourned public hearing is closed, could I have a motion then, please, to grant or deny the applicant the variances? We will take them individually, I will, I will read them separately and go down, and we'll, we'll vote on each one separately, okay? All right, so, I'm going to start from the top, right? Variance number one, where ten feet to the side yard property line is required, the applicant can provide eight point two feet for the legalization of an existing ten foot by fourteen foot shed, thus requesting a variance of one point eight feet. On variance number one, I would motion to approve that variance, the benefit cannot be achieved by any other means, it does not propose an undesirable effect to the neighborhood, the request is not substantial, well, the request also would not pose any environmental or physical effects on a neighborhood, however, it is self-created, so I am voting to approve variance number one. Can I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
So moved. We need a roll call there, B, probably, right? Roll call on variance one, please.
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinn?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Belli?
Yes. All right, so variance number one is approved, where forty feet to the side yard right property line is required, the applicant can provide fifteen point two feet for the legalization of a front bedroom addition, thus requesting a variance of twenty-four point eight feet. Okay, now, just so I am clear, I want to just look at plan one more time, that was from here, right, to the, to the left property line. So, we are looking here, forty feet to the, the applicant can provide a bedroom.
I think it's written in.
Right, can provide, provide fifteen point two, okay, so it's from there to there.
Here, it's numbered on this one.
Numbered, I'm going to make it a little.
Oh.
Variance two.
That was helpful.
Yeah.
That was helpful. All right, variance number two, right, so I am going to, sorry, read that one more time, where forty feet to the side yard right property line is required, the applicant can provide fifteen point two feet for the legalization of a front bedroom addition, thus requesting a variance of twenty-four point eight feet. All right, I am going to make a motion to approve variance number two, whether the benefit can be achieved by any other feasible means, it cannot, any undesirable change to the neighborhood, it does not, whether the request is substantial, it is quite substantial, however, not enough for me to disapprove it, whether the request would have any adverse physical changes on the neighborhood, no, it will not, and is it self-created? Yes, it is. All right, could I have a second, please, for variance number two?
A second.
Roll call, B.
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinn?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Belli?
Yes, okay, so variance number two has been approved. Variance number three, where forty feet to the side yard left property line is required, the applicant can provide thirty feet for the legalization of a front bedroom addition, thus requesting a variance of ten feet. So, we are looking, sorry, got it, okay, that one's a little clearer. Okay, so I will make a motion to approve variance number three, the benefit cannot be achieved by any other physical, sorry, achieved by any other feasible means, it will not create any undesirable changes or detriment to the neighborhood or properties, the request is not substantial, whether the request will have any adverse effects on the environment, it will not, and whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, yes, it is. So, I will make a motion to approve variance number three. Could I have a second?
A second.
Okay, can I, roll call, please, B.
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinn?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Belli?
Yes, all right, so variance number three has been approved. Variance number four, where forty feet to the side yard right property line is required, the applicant can provide twenty-five feet for the legalization of a rear kitchen addition, thus requesting a variance of fifteen feet. All right, got it, number four, all right, so I will make a motion to approve variance number four, that benefit cannot be achieved by any other feasible means, it will not create any undesirable changes or detriment to the nearby properties or neighborhood, the request is not substantial, whether the request will have any adverse effects, it will not, environmental or physical effects, and whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, yes, it is, however, not enough for me to disapprove it, so I am making a motion to approve variance number four. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please, B.
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinn?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Belli?
Yes. Variance number five, where forty feet to the side yard left property line is required, the applicant can provide twelve feet for the legalization of a rear kitchen addition, thus requesting a variance of twenty-eight feet. This is number five, now, is that from there to there?
Five, is this one?
Basically, the, the width of that concrete pad.
It's next where it says concrete walk.
It's basically, right, the width of that concrete walk.
Yeah.
Got it, got it, okay, all right, so, variance number five, so I'm going to read that one over again, where forty feet to the side. Where 40 feet to the side yard left property line is required, the applicant can provide 12 feet for the legalization of a rear kitchen addition, thus requesting a variance of 28 feet.
Are you a number five or a number six?
Number five. Number five, Tom. That is, you know, very substantial variance.
It is. Then I gotta tear it down.
Yeah, no, it's a, it is a tough one. Based on its location.
Do you have that existing map again? The existing, uh.
This one?
Uh, no, the one that showed existing structure. It's this one.
All right.
Previous.
It seemed like that was basically not inherently worse than.
Yeah.
This was like that, right?
Right, exactly.
That there, and then this was.
Yeah.
Off the back somewhere.
Yeah, got it. All right, so variance number five, I am going to make a motion to grant variance number five. Where the benefit can be achieved by any feasible means, it is not. Will it create any undesirable detriment to the nearby properties, it will not. Whether the request is substantial, it is quite substantial. Whether the request will have adverse or physical effects on the neighborhood environment, it will not. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, yes, it is. Variance number, oh, sorry. I have a second. All right, can I have a roll call, please, B?
Mr. Delacorte? Mr. Lawrence Zinnick?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, variance number six, granted. I'm sorry, that was five, we granted number five. Moving on to variance number six. Variance number six, where 40 feet to the side right property line is required, the applicant can provide 27 feet for the legalization of a rear deck, thus requesting a variance of 13 feet. I will make a motion to grant the applicant the variance number six. That variance cannot be achieved by any other physical, feasible means. Does not create any undesirable change to the neighborhood or nearby properties. The request is substantial. Whether the request will have any adverse effects on the neighborhood, it will not. Whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, yes, it is. But I still would move to grant the applicant variance number six. Could I have a second, please?
A second.
All right, roll call, please, B.
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinnick?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Yes, all right, so variance number six is granted. Variance number seven, where 40 feet to the side left property line is required, the applicant can provide 17 feet for the legalization of a rear deck addition, thus requesting a variance of 23 feet.
That is seven, got it.
Okay. Excuse me. I'll make a motion to grant the applicant the variance number seven. Whether that benefit can be achieved by any other feasible means, it cannot. Will not create any undesirable change to the neighborhood or detriment to the nearby properties. The request is substantial. Whether the request will have any adverse effects to the environment, it will not. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, yes, it is. Could I have a second, please?
A second.
Can I have a roll call, B?
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinnick?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Calabai?
Yes. All right, so variance number six has been granted. I'm sorry, that was variance seven. Variance number eight, where 40 feet is required to the side left property line, the applicant can provide zero feet for the garage, thus requesting a 40-foot variance. As, as discussed, you know, in detail, right, with everything with the overhang and peeling back the overhang, I still cannot find it feasible really to grant that variance. So I am going to deny variance number eight. I think it's, it goes without saying, it's quite substantial. And a zero variance really is, I think, kind of an on-starter for me. And guys, I, you guys all can vote as well, but I am making a motion to deny the applicant variance number eight. Can I have a second?
Yes, second.
Roll call, please, B.
So just for clarity.
Yes.
If you say yes, you're voting to deny. If you say no.
Why don't we say?
I agree with the.
Kind of like opposite.
Why don't we, why don't we say deny or approve?
Yeah, I think verb, verb.
So I, I'm, I'm, a vote to deny variance number eight. Could I have a second? We had a second already. So roll call, please, please state deny or approve.
I have a question first.
Go ahead.
So, we talked about the possibility of removing the soffit. Was it the soffit we were talking about?
Correct.
Does that have to be a condition?
Only if you would approve the variance. If you deny the variance, you have a bigger problem than you have one that you take down, the piece of the wall.
Okay, so when, when do I do, ask for a condition, when I'm saying that I?
No, so if, if you deny, going along with the motion to deny, then that's a non-issue at this point. You'd have to come back, the gardeners, he has to get, he only have to get a variance that this board will approve. At that point, he's gonna have to take down the soffit, by you guys, he's take down the soffit just because it's over the property line, the gardeners.
So one other question, if we deny number five, which was for the kitchen, that variance goes all the way down. So if they do decide to remove the garage, they could in theory remove to that line.
Kitchen is back further. What we have, the kitchen's back. So the line that goes straight down is a garage, a laundry room, and a bathroom.
Yeah, but if we deny it, they need to either decide that they want to come back and get another variance somewhere between that variance five and zero, or they can move everything to the variance five line essentially, and not need any additional variances.
Yes, they would.
They still have.
They would still need additional variance.
Because the variance is only granted for that part, that's the kitchen.
Okay, but it's not just for the whole side setback.
So if they took the whole side in, in line with the, I know what you're saying, with the kitchen, that new line, you'd have to come in for a variance. So it lose the, probably lose the bathroom, the laundry room, and however many feet that you gave him for the kitchen on the left side, so.
Is that number five?
That, laundry room also, it's the utility room where the water comes in and distributed. So there's a water heater there, and that, I believe, for us, I just don't know for sure.
Yeah, the mechanicals would have to get moved.
Yeah.
In order to potentially save him, him, him time, could we approve this variance with a much greater distance, say, at same as five, so that he at least has some distance he could work with and not have to come back for other variances?
I would not do that. Because it would appear that they received all their variances.
Okay.
I would keep it as a denial and let them come back when they remove. But I don't know what, you don't even know what the owner's going to say about literally taking 10 feet of that side of the building down. And what, the cost per, the cost be prohibited for him because you'd have to hire contractors to literally cut it in half, roof line could be compromised. And I don't know what's involved in, I mean, it's a one story, correct?
Yeah, it's a one story.
So.
It's complicated.
Would be compromising.
But you're an engineer, so you could figure out how it would work.
I, I could.
You look smart.
I appreciate it.
Again, that's something for you and your client, not for tonight.
No, of course, of course.
So you see where I'm going with that, David?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think what I'm going at is, number five, I think, was contentious. So if, if they come back with a number somewhere between zero, and will we approve for number five?
It will be more chances. No, it will be more chances that time because it's already established.
So if he would take 12 feet of the building back, you would, it would be in good design that you would grant that, seeing that you granted it for the kitchen.
Correct.
It'll almost be a given, but he would still need to come back.
For the variance.
For that matter.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I was just thinking that we could, in theory, approve a smaller number now, like we have in the past.
But then I would.
So we could give him that 12 feet now, but.
Right.
He would need to then decide. You know, they have to come back if they don't want to do that, so then they at least have.
But good, I think it was, I think it was a, I think. It was a good question.
Should we just take that piece?
Pretty much.
I'll say take that piece completely off and give him this variance now, so that he doesn't have to come back.
But we don't want to go that route. Right, we don't want to go down that road. So we, we should, we should rule on the variance as written, and then whatever the applicant decides to do, then not have to come back.
And if you wanted to, but what you're discussing, if you feel that you would like to say, should it become 12 feet like the kitchen, you would be in favor of approving a future variance, at least then he knows he won't be doing it and maybe faced with a no again, I mean, you can do that much.
Gotcha. There, and we would write that into this denial?
You, you could.
Okay.
It's denied, but with a proviso of that.
Okay, so, all right, so.
So we're at roll call.
Right, what's that?
We're at roll call.
We're at roll call, and then before we roll call, then I need to state that.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to variance number eight, I'm gonna read it, basically, I don't wanna say a do-over, but.
Number eight.
Number eight.
Great, everything else is done. Where 40 feet is required to the side left property line, the applicant can provide zero feet for the garage, thus requesting a variance of 40 feet. I am making a motion to deny the, the applicant that variance because it is just too great for me, as a board member, to entertain. However, we would entertain a variance from the applicant that would be similar to or equal to the variance we granted on the kitchen, which I believe was variance number five. So we would entertain that if the applicant would then come back before the board at a future date for that type of a variance. But again, just to be clear, I am denying variance number eight as written. Now, do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, so we have roll call, please state approve or deny. Approve or deny.
Say deny, use the, use the words, because this gets tricky when it's.
Yeah. So state approve or deny.
Mr. Delacorte?
Okay, so, and just one more question. It, it's zero feet now, and that's, it's not zero feet now, but it will be zero feet.
It would be, after you takes the soffit off, would you say 0.9?
Yeah, if you take, it would be 0.9.
It's to the property, I mean, for property.
Right, right.
So that's implied as a condition, I guess. Okay, I approve.
Wait.
No.
I, I don't think approve's a right word.
No.
Deny or disagree? Okay.
Okay.
Because approve is.
Yeah, right.
Do you deny the variance to the property line, or are you okay with it to the property line?
I am okay with it to the property line. At the 0.9 feet.
0.9?
Yes.
After the soffit.
With the soffit taken off.
Okay.
And my question is, other than the garage, there's also the bathroom and the laundry room?
Yeah, so.
All those exist there, right now, in that piece?
In one line, if you're from the corner of that garage looking back into the rear, you're gonna hit the, you're gonna hit a hallway, you're gonna hit a laundry and utility room with hot water and water comes in distributed to the house, and you're going to hit a bathroom, which.
And that's all within that structure?
Yes.
Was in that.
I wanna say, he, I, I don't know how many bathrooms are listed. That might be the only bathroom. There's only one bathroom, that's the bathroom of the house, actually. If you look on the report, it's one bathroom. So it would be hitting that and the bathroom for the house, which, I don't know where you just put the other one, but.
With the soffit being removed, I, I would allow for that structure to stay.
You don't want to deny it.
I do not want to deny it, no.
With the condition the soffit's removed?
With the condition that the soffit is removed, that it comes off.
Depending on where this goes. Let's just finish the roll call.
Okay.
So we've.
So what's, so what's this? What did you say?
I would allow that this structure to stay.
He disagrees with the denial.
Disagrees.
He's no to the denial.
No to the denial.
Okay.
I would deny.
No?
Deny, no. I mean, I don't know what I would.
Deny, no.
You want the variance denied?
Yes.
Okay.
Deny.
David?
I would deny. I would be okay with the 12 feet.
Yes.
And I, I'm denying as well. I'm okay with the 12 feet, but.
So, so which of eight variances denied is going to have two more down?
Okay, so just to clarify, so we'll, have to remove the entire garage, bathroom, and utility room? See where you'll put.
He, he could propose something else, he could propose, I'm not saying we would vote yes, but, you know, he can propose anywhere between zero and 12.
Okay. How would that work for that vote before we like sign?
If you, if you propose five, you come back with five, and we would vote yes or no. We might vote no again, and then you'd be coming back a third time.
Or you could look to see how you can find an area in the house, that's maybe the living room or something where you could notch out of that, or so, just to renovate the floor plan inside after possible 10 to 12 feet removed, you know, you'll just heard what they.
Yeah, no, of course, of course. Okay.
And.
I mean, you could propose just removing the garage and leaving, you know, it's, it's up to you what you would want to propose.
But if we remove the garage, just to clarify, we, the garage is one section, but that wall is still shared by the utility room and stuff, so that has to be removed along with it. It's not just garage.
Right.
We're talking about garage, utility room, and anything that is in that.
That lawn.
That lawn. Which is like 1.1 feet to the, that one we are denying, right?
More than 1.1 feet.
I mean, the reason of denying was, it was 0.9 or 1.1, right? So.
Yes.
So now, whatever is in that area, that has been modified.
Yeah, the soffit, the soffit.
Correct.